Board for Monday, March 11th, 2024. Also available on Zoom at the address noted at the top of the agenda posted with the town clerk. I'll call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri Quirk?
Here.
Mike Beftyst?
Yeah.
Jane Wiesen?
Here.
Sam Corbett?
Here.
Carl Schultz?
Here.
And Chair Michael King is here. We have a full board. Preliminary business. Seven dash twenty Borrego Solar Systems and nine dash twenty Borrego Solar Systems. It is my understanding that the proponent has requested a continuance to review some documents concerning... What are you pointing at?
The clerk's got his hand.
I'm not, I'm not done. When I'm done talking, he can... That the, the proponent is requesting a continuance to review some documentation surrounding conditions. At that point, I would ask if the, the proponent is either in the gallery or online.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Greg Sampson with Sullivan and Westers here for the proponent.
Okay, and is it your intent to request a condition, I mean, a continuance for this evening?
Yes, we were hoping, we did receive some proposed modifications to certain conditions that we had been discussing with the planning board. And we just did not have the right people available since when after, between today and when we received them on Thursday to, to review them adequately. So we were hoping that we could postpone this to the first meeting in April. I unfortunately have a conflict myself in the second meeting in March.
So we're looking at Monday, April 8th.
Yes, that would be our preference, please.
Okay. We do have an open meeting for that Monday. Is there any comments from the board considering the continuance?
Go ahead.
You pushed it first.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, that's your come. Mr. Chair, I, I think I heard Mr. Sampson say he did not get the revised conditions until Thursday. Is that correct, Mr. Sampson?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
Reasonable. I think so. I would have to agree. Yes. Sherri?
I think it's reasonable, too. I mean, it's, we were working in a very, you know, constricted timeframe. So they need more time. I think that's fine.
Mike?
Yeah.
Ms. Jane?
I don't have a problem with the continuance. I just would question whether the likelihood of everybody being here is high for that four eight twenty-four date. Is anybody going to be away?
Um, no.
Right now, I should be here.
You should be here.
Here.
Sam. Yeah, right now, I'm not traveling on that day.
Other than that, I have no problem with.
Okay, it looks like we don't have any conflicts with the board, so we will pencil you in for...
Mr. Chair? I move that we continue oh seven twenty Borrego Systems LLC, twenty-seven Charge Pond Road, and oh nine twenty Borrego Systems one fifty Tohonet Pond Road until the first planning board meeting in April, which I believe is April sixth.
Eighth.
Until April eighth.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri?
Viewing this as an administrative matter, I vote aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for making appearances and asking in person. We appreciate that.
Yep.
And we will see you on the eighth.
Thank you. I appreciate the consideration. Look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, continued public hearings. Project fifteen dash twenty-three Savage On Realty LLC, special permit for cluster development Form C and site plan review, hidden trails off County Road.
Perfect timing. For the record, I'm Peter Tylobon, the project attorney. This is John Churchill, the project proponent. And Brad Bertolo is project engineer.
Mike, you only got one set of data. One's on the deal. Brad, just send the email.
Thank you, Chair.
What page do you want to go on? What page do you want to go on?
Wherever you want to go. I'll follow.
Just zoom in first.
There's a lot of paper.
For everyone, if you...
I think so.
Do those have a revision one date on them? Be on the right side halfway up the line.
Four. Grab one. Yes, I, it's very, very small. Very, very small.
I have additional small copies of the plan if you need it.
Mr. Chair?
Could you use one, please?
To help with the note taker, I think we need to read these documents into the record because they have to be recorded on the minutes. All documents reviewed in the meetings have to be listed in the minutes.
Is this for our new, our new minute?
That person, yes.
Okay, do you want to read them in?
I guess.
I don't have a copy, so it's going to be easier for you than me.
So the, the only document that I got today is a package titled Hidden Trails, definitive subdivision plan of land and special permit for residential cluster development, definitive plan, rev. one dated two nine twenty-four. And the description is root review comments. It's a twenty-six page, twenty-six page document.
I also have for...
Twenty, I'm sorry, it's a twenty-five page document.
Twenty-five pages.
My, my eyes are trying to see the itty bitty type.
I have for viewing this evening, some exhibit plans to help address some of the comments, kind of color coded from this, this board over the past couple of meetings. It'll just isolate and highlight some changes that we made, particularly to some of the waiver requests.
Were copies made for us?
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, okay.
So you can note that they were also omitted out. You've got to assemble on the fly.
Did you get another one?
Yeah, I don't have one.
So we got two documents. One is a density document and the other is a sidewalk tree street layout.
I have another small one, too.
All right, so again, Brad Bertolo with JC Engineering. What I recently just passed out was a updated overview similar to what was discussed on our initial discussions with this board back in June of last year. Color coded basically showing the amount of open space on the property and where development will be concentrated. Lots in yellow are shown in yellow, green and blue representing the open space and, and pond area on the property. Again, this is a fifty-six lot subdivision. It's a hundred and fifty-three acres in total. Of that, one hundred and sixteen acres will be open space. The remaining area will be lot area and right of way area. The second plan, I'll just, I'll get into the, the waiver requests that were discussed at the last hearing. There were some concerns regarding sidewalks and streetlights. So highlighted in red shown on the middle sized plan there, we are proposing to increase the amount of sidewalks around the, I guess we call it the interior loop around the site. We have an entrance that comes off of County, County Road. First about nine hundred feet, there's, there's no houses. Then we start getting into the houses that were on the north side of the roadway. And as you continue down Road A, which runs from County Road down to the cul-de-sac, we providing one, one sidewalk on the southern side of the right of way adjacent to all the proposed house lots. We're providing two sidewalks around the main loop so that the lots that front on both Road A, on Road A and Road B, I mean, Road B and Road C have, have direct access to sidewalks. And as discussed or at the, at the last hearing, Road D is a small little five to six lot cul-de-sac in the middle, providing one, one sidewalk on one side there. So between October and beginning of January, we received comments from the town consultant under both this, the board and the Conservation Commission. And for pretty much for the month, month of January, I revised the plans, submitted them on February, February 9th. We were here before you on February 12th to request a continuance as that was not enough time, obviously, to review these plans. Since that time, we've received updated comments from a second review from the consultant in both conservation comments and planning board comments. We just received comments today regarding one of the, one of the review letters from Conservation, dealing with resource areas. So we've addressed these or revised these plans to address those comments. There are a number of technical comments regarding structure spacing, sizing of pipes. And those have all been addressed. There are a couple of issues we're still working with, with Phil. But they're all manageable and something that could be conditioned in an approval if they're not completed ahead of time. The other portion of the project more related to conservation was a review of the resource areas. They had a couple of comments regarding a new small resource area on the entrance drive. It's around halfway down the main entrance. They also pointed out that the small isolated wetland that's to the southwest of Road A, the entrance road, approximately a thousand feet in, it's, it has a green hatch with a blue line around it.
Which, which plan are you referring to now?
This one here.
This, this is the one.
So that area is mapped as a potential vernal pool. And at the time of these plans being prepared, it wasn't a suitable area to, to review to determine if it's a, a vernal pool. That takes place over, you know, the next month or two to determine, you know, if there's actual vernal pool species. We decided to assume that it's a vernal pool in design as such. We calculated the annual boundary and mean annual boundary of the surface water in accordance to the Wetlands Protection Act. That would be the blue line that's within the green hatch. And under the local conservation bylaw, fortunately he's here, can clarify that, the local bylaw, wetlands bylaw, has a hundred foot addition added to that boundary. So that's the outer blue line that's in that location. So the prior design included two house lots on the right-hand side as you're heading south on that entrance drive. So we relocated those to the north side of the right of way, basically providing a complete open space on the west side of the entrance drive. We pulled back our work limits to work with conservation setbacks, redesigned the drainage facility, infiltration basin to meet setbacks, groundwater separations. So we're basically planning for the, the worst case scenario on that side. The remainder of the wetlands pretty much were agreed upon by the town consultant and their consultant. There were a couple of minor changes on a couple of flags. They, they adjusted three or four feet. They didn't impact any of the proposed work that, that we're, we're doing. Again, we're still working with the Conservation Commission. We have a hearing next Wednesday. So for the most part, most of the technical comments were addressed. I think this board was more concerned with the waivers that, at the last hearing. We originally requested a waiver for streetlights and proposed post lanterns. Seems like the board wanted streetlights at the intersections that were in accordance with the, the regulations. So we highlighted the locations on plan. I know it's hard to see, but it's a black symbol with an orange dot.
That's, that's...
We have one at the entrance and at each intersection in accordance with the storm, the subdivision regulations. The waiver regarding the sidewalks, we eliminated that and added the sidewalks around the loop. We feel that that's an adequate amount for the proposed layout of the lots and how they are tied into the, the roadway system. The sidewalks are also extend to the open space or, or extend down to the open space. And the most easily readable, easily area to access that open space is at the southern end of Road B. So once you pull into the roadway, you get up to the first intersection, take a right, go all the way down to the end. This, this fairly gradual change in elevation between the roadway and the pond or the path that goes around the pond. There's a, you know, path that accesses around the complete pond. I'm not sure if any of the board members were able to walk it. I know that we had a site meeting and walked up around the start of it, which is on the, the far side of the pond. And that all connects to the, the open space that's to the north, northeast of the existing pond. Regarding curbing, we eliminated that waiver as the subdivision regs that were in effect at the time of this submitted stated that either curbing or Cape Cod berm are used. I did notice that this board did update their subdivision regs recently. And it appears that you now approve of four different types of, of curbing. So we think that that waiver is moot and no longer needed. The last waiver we had was regarding fire alarm boxes. And the fire department has already commented on that stating there it's an old technology no longer, no longer needed. We are providing town water. We'll have hydrants set to appropriate spacing throughout the site. So there's no, no further need for any, any additional waivers on, at least on the fire department side. We are providing some concrete curb adjacent to the roadway that goes over that small wetland. There's a fifty-foot wide right of way on the entrance drive as you're driving south on the roadway. There is some grade changes.
That's that.
There's some grade changes in that area that's going to require a retaining wall on one side. I think it's roughly four or five feet. So we, to allow space in that area, we shifted the sidewalk adjacent to the roadway and provided a six inch tall concrete curb in that area for that full stretch where the sidewalk's within three feet.
That's that black bar?
The black bar is the retaining wall along the property line. But the sidewalk is adjacent to, to the pavement in that location. Obviously, Cape Cod berm would not be suitable just for, for safety reasons on, in that location. But for the remainder of the site, we're still proposing Cape Cod berm. We do have pavement width in accordance to the requirements, twenty-two feet wide plus twelve inch berm on both sides, twenty-four feet total. I believe the fire department had no comments or concerns regarding that. There's, there's no regulations for them to follow. We feel that the Cape Cod berm would be easier in regards to emergency access. Obviously, concrete curbing is, can't prevent access into the shoulder if necessary. Again, we, I, I had conversation, well, email conversation with the consultant today. Obviously, he said he couldn't come today. I gave him a couple of ideas on a few outstanding issues that were on his letter. Everything seems workable. He had no concerns and any of the outstanding issues, about three or four on his letter, they're, it could easily be conditioned as, as part of an approval to, to update on, on final construction plans. Yeah, so the one last thing that this board and the commission, Conservation Commission have asked about was a twenty-one E assessment. So we hired lightship engineering out of Plymouth to do a phase one review of the site. And that is a review, a visual review to confirm that if there's been any problems on this site in the past, if there's any current problems visual. We took that further into a phase two with limited testing. The company installed four monitoring wells throughout the site. Wanted a couple adjacent to the ponds and a couple within the former areas that were used for staging of equipment, where they basically processed the material that came out of the pond. Again, this, this area is not being developed. It's in open space. It won't be developed. I think eventually, you know, over time, some of the open areas will be, revegetate itself over the time. A portion of the open space on the north side of the wetlands, which is to the north of the pond, that would be the only area where some work will take place within the sand area based on aerial photographs. Doesn't appear that any work or staging work was done in that area. It may have been areas of removing sand, but they didn't remove down to the, the pond elevation in that area. So they, they completed twenty test pits and groundwater sampling. They sampled the sediment at the bottom of the pond. They sampled the water in the pond and basically came back with no reportable conditions of any oil or hazardous materials on the property from, from, from where they tested, which is basically where most of the work took place on all their staging. So that document obviously was uploaded on the website. It's fairly lengthy.
Fairly?
Four hundred pages. Has some interesting aerial maps if you're viewing. But for the most part, most of it's just testing, testing results from the, from all their samples.
And if I could just add, part of the reason, of course, was the curiosity of both your board and the Conservation Commission and the fact that in order to get financing for the project, the bank's going to want this sort of study done anyway. So, but it was also done in response to testimony that, well, I wouldn't call it testimony because nobody was sworn, comments that were made to the Conservation Commission alleging that there were half-buried barrels and things of that nature out there. So we felt compelled to disprove that, which this study has done. There was also a letter submitted that alleged that it should be reported to DEP. Again, reports are made to DEP when there are documented releases of oil or hazardous materials in certain quantities or above. And nobody has alleged that that has taken place recently out there. There was an old oil tank problem that was remedied twenty-something years ago. I believe one of the wells was put in that area and confirms that it was cleaned up properly at the time. So I just wanted the board to understand that, that there was an additional purpose here as well for doing that twenty-one E.
Okay, thank you. Josh, did you see that report at all?
No.
Okay, so you could...
But I did see the brief, although that was written by...
Did you have any concerns or comments or?
No, no, and I used to do twenty-one E site investigations in my previous life, so.
What, what you read in there, brief summary seemed in order?
Mr. Chair, for you, I haven't taken the time to personally, planning board meetings, but there are plans to remove the concrete vault that's in the sand pit.
We would like to just fill it in. Definitely, it's got an open hole, so that definitely has to be taken care of.
Some enterprising kid will turn it into a clubhouse.
It was, it was a neat clubhouse.
Why don't you like fun?
Any questions or comments from the board?
Should share through you to the proponent. Can you, Brad, can you remind me, fifty, fifty houses, is that what we're talking about?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, okay. So to a request that I made, I believe, at our January meeting, fifty-six new houses will require the town to add five point six houses to its affordable housing stock. I had requested that, that you consider adding affordable houses to this project. Has that, was that considered? You didn't report on that. So did you look at that and is that appropriate or possible? Just a question.
Yeah, we've had these discussions amongst ourselves.
Yeah, we, we've definitely considered it. You know, we're waiting to see sort of what comes out of these meetings. And in order to determine that, Habitat for Humanity would be the one that we would be looking at to donate essentially a lot and then they'd be leaned back on to us to provide the subcontractors to help build that. As you know, most towns do have that ten percent. And then what they do is they say you can have sixty house lots and those four become affordable. So it does come here off the, you know, this is a request that basically is, it is a big request.
Right, so we, it's still being considered and it's not, it's not a close...
You know, it's just not a flat no, you know, I mean...
No, I understand it's hard for you and it affects, it affects how you, how you approach the project, but the town, the town has to deal with and, and should deal with affordable housing requirements. So if it's still open, please continue to address it at the meeting and keep us apprised of, of what you think you're going to be able to do.
Yeah, I mean, the additional costs that, that you may or may not see here is the, this, this property was bettered for four hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of bediments and received no infrastructure regarding from the water department. So that's still on the back end of, of this purchase, you know? The four hundred and forty thousand dollars is still, still needs to be, you know, is paid. Also, the, there's four houses at the end of Squirrel Island Road that rely on overhead wires that come off of County Road. When you did the site walk, you'll see that. So when, when that line gets taken out, essentially, those four homes are off the grid and they need to go. And that, that goes basically, as you see the size of this property, it goes from County Road through Wishbone, through a private residence on Mackey Way, and then picks up the additional four houses at the end of Squirrel. So in, in doing this plan, what, what we're doing is going to provide reliability for their electric services for those homes because what we're going to do is we're going to tap into that last pole off the edge of our project. So when we design this, this road, that, that offshoot cul-de-sac... So when we design this, this road, that offshoot called the SAC, sort of that goes all the way to the east at the end of Squirrel Island, in that area, we're gonna pick up their last pole and we're paying for that upgrade of that entire electric service so that they only have to worry about now poles from the end of that road. Whereas right now, they're relying on overhead wires. That, if you went down that path, I think that's the cable and telephone that's probably about, what, six feet above the ground?
Yeah.
So those will all be, we are looking at that. You know, we are investing some money in the cable as well.
Thank you for that.
Anything else?
At the time, I, we need those final comments and we need the notice of intent from...
Mr. Chair?
Sherry?
If it's my turn, I have a couple of questions.
It's your turn.
Okay, thank you. I don't know to whom to address this, probably to my fellow members of the board, but you've done a 21A assessment. Is it customary for the board to hire its own person to do an independent assessment? Or is assessment of the assessment something that we look to Phil to do?
I would think, well, personally, I think we would rely on Phil and Josh to justify the quality of the 21E. I think it would be the same as an engineer putting his stamp on a set of plans. Whoever signs off on a 21E should be pretty damn sure of his work or her work, because the future repercussions would be grand. So I don't know if there would be, I don't know if there'd be any benefit to a second one to confirm the first.
No.
But I don't know.
If I could just speak to that?
Sure.
The, both, both studies are prepared by what are known as licensed site professionals in Massachusetts. Those are people who are, by virtue of their education and experience, basically admitted to sort of the practice of environmental analysis, I guess you could call it. They're the people who sign off on submittals to DEP. They're the people you hire when your oil tank blows up in your house and all of a sudden you've got a site that has to get cleaned up. All the work has to go in under their stamp. And as Chairman King noted, you know, it's stamped typically when they're a DEP submittal. But the same people go around and do these sorts of things. I don't know that Josh is an LSP, but I'm sure he was working under an LSP.
Correct.
Who basically sent him out and said, "Go do this, 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 and this," and report back to me. And the LSP is the one who puts all the information together and delivers the deliverable, whatever it is, whether it's what colloquially they call the 21E for a bank report, which this report, by the way, will double as. Or whether it's dealing with a contaminated property where you have to do regulatory submittals to DEP to show that you have a plan to clean up the site, that you've adhered to the plan to clean up the site, you've done what you're supposed to with whatever hazardous material's been hauled off the site, and that you've achieved, you know, the proper outcome, either with an activity and use limitation saying, you know, "Don't build a school over there." Or in the case of this site, it was cleaned up with no activity and use limitation. So the site as a whole would be open to any sort of development, notwithstanding that they had an oil leak there twenty-something years ago.
And, so I'm assuming that some, some kind of liability might flow from any kind of flaw or anything else that could arise in the future that should have been caught in this?
Well, yes and no. I will say that unless there's almost gross negligence on the part of the person performing the 21E, there's really not much that can be determined in terms of liability. Remember, on any site, you're not able to analyze every single shovel full of dirt there. And so when somebody goes out there on this sort of a 21E report, they're looking back in records, "How was the site used? Was there any contamination there previously? Was it dealt with properly?" And I mean, they're looking at maps going back into the eighteen hundreds. Those are things that DEP will require if you do have a problem, because they wanna know, "Well, okay, great, you fixed up the oil spill, but we noted that it was some kind of an operation back in eighteen hundred, and did you notice anything else in that area?" So, I guess the question is, as an attorney, I would find it really hard to sue a licensed site professional unless they were just grotesquely negligent, you know, or misled people in their reporting by saying, "Yeah, we sampled something," and they never did. But it's really the same sort of standard you would impose on an engineer, like John here, or Brad.
Okay. It's less comforting, but it is what it is.
Well, Sherry, I wonder if Josh and Phil, in their review, if they find something that is more complex than they're comfortable looking at, that they would say to, I'm putting my trust in them, that they would say to us, "I'm not comfortable with this. I'd like to have someone else look at it." So, I mean, yeah.
And to Josh's point, you haven't read it.
Right.
Right, I haven't looked at the full report yet, just the summary.
Right, so, you know, we would probably want both Phil and Josh to at least review it and, you know, pick out the high points and say, "Yes, I'm comfortable with what it's telling us," or, "Oh, I've got some concern over point A and point B."
So, Mr. Chairman, is that an action, we're requesting the planning office to comment on the 21E report?
I would be, I would be happy to ask that, yes.
So, Mr. Faraday, if you could, if you could take that as a request, we're looking for comment.
So noted.
Either from your role in the Concom or your role helping us. Thank you.
Yeah, Alan and Major's report proceeded in some instances on parallel lines. So there's gonna be a little bit of overlap between the things that are discussed in their report and also in our report. I can tell you that for a site this size, and I have quite a bit of experience going over these documents going back twenty-something years, for a site this size with a prior release, there were remarkably few areas concerned noted. A good portion of the site, as you know, has been undisturbed, remained undisturbed, hasn't had any history of industry or anything like that there. The sand operation was the only operation of consequence there that we can find. You know, we didn't have a, you know, something creating iron out of, you know, bog iron as so much of the town had back in the eighteen hundreds. We don't, there weren't any operations like that there, for no other reason than you didn't have a big river to power things. A lot of the old mills in town were built along rivers, and so you might expect to find some issues there, you might expect to find some buried stuff, you might expect to find some fly ash that's covered by a veneer of soil and something you might never wanna dig into. But there's no history of that sort of use out here. It wasn't an industrial site, except in terms of the mining of the sand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm good.
Mike?
Not at this time, I'm pretty good right now.
Okay.
I don't mean to take us off on a tangent, but I'd like to bring us down from thirty thousand feet down to a thousand feet, thousand feet maybe, or a hundred feet. And my first question is about the sidewalks and what the planned material is for the sidewalks.
Batuminous concrete, asphalt.
Okay, and so the follow-up question to that is how, in your planning process, where you're selling these lots to people who would build a house on a lot, what is the plan for locating where there would be curb cuts for parking on each site? I'm just curious about that.
It's, when the house lots are developed, the driveway will be, will situated where it needs to be. With Cape Cod berm, it's easier, you have the full frontage.
Yeah.
When you have concrete curb, it's difficult to manage.
Yeah, right.
And try to figure that ahead of time. It really restricts the, you know, the layout of the lot.
Yeah, yep.
Usually that's one of the first things, roadway curbing, you know, at the start of the road, which would need to be done before typical lot releases.
Concrete curb becomes a mess after a few winters, anyway. The snow plows.
And with such small lots, it's gonna be, you know, a hundred feet of frontage and you need, you know, at least twenty to thirty foot to make your turn into your driveway. Now you're looking at doing thirty feet of, you know, thirty, forty feet, fifty feet, then a curb cut, fifty feet curb cut, fifty. It's just, it may be too messy in that situation.
Yeah, so I guess the concern that I have is, we've got probably an issue with the way the zoning dimensions are in the bylaw, with a sixty-foot front setback on these tiny lots, because the bylaw has you use the same dimensional requirements for these small lots as you do for the bigger lots. And a sixty-foot front setback gives you precious little in the way of backyard and gives it all over to front yard. And my guess is that there are gonna be a lot of cars parked here, and so the play space for kids in these neighborhoods is gonna be in and amongst the cars in the front yard, which is what zoning is pushing this to, which I think is not great.
To your point, although I don't know that it's been decided yet, there's a possibility of going to ZBA and seeking some frontage relief. I'm seeking some depth into the frontage relief.
I would be a proponent. I mean, I would be an advocate for that, because I think that just, I'm looking at the buildable area on these lots, and it's really pushing the houses toward the back of the lot, crunching up the backyard where you want the kids playing, away from the cars, away from the streets. And I think that that would be to the benefit of this whole neighborhood, and it's, you know...
Yeah, we're gonna attack, we're gonna, we're gonna look strongly at doing that after we get our approvals, as you can, because we can't go there until we get our approvals. So it's something we did do on a previous open space subdivision where we needed to require, requires a hundred-foot setback. And I am a proponent, I was very active in getting the, that in front of town meeting, actually, if you recall, like four or five years ago, to make different setbacks. I was not able to attend town meeting, so it was very confusing on the town meeting floor, so they just decided to not vote for it. They didn't understand really enough about it, and no one really spoke to it. So that would definitely be something in the future that I think in our town bylaws, we would, I would love to see reduced frontage setbacks. Because it's not only just the house, they, they take the front setback to the stairs. So you have a four, a four-foot stoop, and then you put three stairs on your house, you know, the house is now sixty-five feet, you know, fifty-six foot back to the front of your house. So, and Brad and I definitely looked at that, because we wanna provide more room in the backyard. And they do have a hundred and ten acres, though, that they'll be able to play in, too.
True, but I think that, you know, to be able to get a neighborhood feel to this...
Like to see kids outside playing.
Yeah, with their neighbors' kids.
Well, we were well aware of your prior discussion on the zero root twenty-five matter, where the ability of the planning board to provide zoning relief is highly limited. So we would ask you if we could, but we can't, so we won't.
Right, thank you. But I just wanted to make note of that.
Kyle, you looked like you had something to say.
Your opinion's important.
It's okay. There were opinions expressed about curb cuts and concrete curbs. I can say that where I lived and the previous zoning board I was on, everything was concrete. Curb cuts were not a problem. Front yard setbacks, not a problem. Beautiful subdivision developments. So the, I don't accept your comments that they don't work. They do. Every, every single...
I'm not saying they don't work, it's just, it's busy with such a small frontage. If they're big lots, it's a little easier.
It can, it works. I've lived in places where it works. So that was, it was an opinion, I was, we don't need to get into it. We're both offering opinion, and I wasn't gonna say anything, but...
It was drug out of you, we get it.
But I pushed you. The one question I had was on the open space. That's always gonna stay open. There's no future plans for extending the development, making hidden trails too, or anything like that?
No, no, it's in the town bylaw, actually. It says, I believe it's to, and I know Mr. Baptiste would condition it to, in perpetuity, stay. So, I'm very familiar with his conditions.
So actually, there was, there was a statement in Phil's most recent peer review, the second one, dated February twenty-sixth. And on the second page, down at the very bottom, the last sentence that goes on to the next page, "The applicant further notes that permitting adjacent to the pond is not sought at this time, but may be subject to future permitting efforts." And I'm curious...
That's kinda contrary to the statement.
That's, no, that's...
That's contrary, exactly, that's contrary to what you just said.
It's pertaining to the individual lots, because individual lots need conservation permitting. We are only permitting through conservation the construction of the roadway, drainage, utilities.
Okay.
And then a portion of the site needs additional permitting through conservation only, but not...
For the individual lots.
There was also discussion at the Conservation Commission about whether or not this association will look to permit some amenities for that pond, a dock or access stairs, or something like that. That's, again, up to the association. Again, it's something that will be allowed. I mean, the regulations do allow open land for riding trails, tennis courts, gardens, swimming pools, natural buffers. There's nothing planned for any of that, well, natural buffers, obviously, but no future development.
Okay, that was, that was my question, was no additional housing?
Yeah.
That that stays as open recreational?
Unless it's deeded, restricted to conservation. Am I very appropriate?
I'm sorry, I appreciate the applicant's commitment, but unless it's restricted and deeded into conservation, anything could happen in the future. And even then, those things can be reversed, so, but we appreciate the applicant's intent.
Do you know yet what form the ownership and maintenance of the open land is gonna take?
We're, at the moment, we plan to keep it under the association, homeowners association, managed by the association.
The association's gonna own the roads and all the open space, basically. So a deed will go into the association name, and they'll pay the taxes for the open space, and they'll also, who knows how the filing's gonna go in town these days, too. So, once we receive the conditions of this approval, I make it, make sure that this approval gets basically incorporated into the decision, as you know, it gets filed at the registry deeds, and then the homeowners association documents will incorporate this decision as well in all the conditions, so that they're directly right in front of everybody that looks and signs up for this association.
That would include maintenance of the stormwater?
Yep, maintenance, everything's gonna be in those documents to make sure that it's clear that the, who's responsible and what they're responsible for.
And the same will go into anything out of conservation, as well as the order of conditions from conservation. That will be incorporated into the homeowners agreement as well, so that when the people do come to take over the homeowners association, they will have clear guidance on what it is they can and cannot do.
But those can change at any time.
Pardon?
The association can vote to change those at any time. I belong to the association, we just scrapped everything that we've had, started over again.
Well, they can't vote to toss your decision, and they can't vote to toss the order of conditions. That, they don't have any authority to do that.
Correct. This decision will be, this decision will be on file with the registry of deeds, and the association documents are gonna refer to this decision, so they can change their document all they want. But what they can't take away is the decision that's already on file that runs in the chain of title for this property.
So you're gonna deed the open space.
Deed to the open space, correct, yep.
Cool.
Who's gonna pay the reliability on the pond, John? Association?
Association's gonna have to, yeah, they're gonna have to pay the pond and all the land around there. Right now, they're using it as a racetrack, and this whole property's...
They've been there for years. The thing is, you know, their pond is pretty hazardous.
Yeah.
There's structures underneath in the water. I know, last time the subdivision, La Russa came before us, we stipulated that, that that pond is dangerous. They were talked about putting water features in there, or dock, or whatever. I mean, that's just opening yourself up for, or somebody up to liability.
Has there been a survey of the pond? I mean, I know you tested the water, but has anybody, like, gone in and looked for...
I've talked to people that have swam there. I mean, I know people that used to live on the end of Squirrel Island Road, used to go swimming there. And we, I think there's one of the documents, Ms. Abel, her and her family, were in that pond, and they swam in that pond. I've fished the pond, I know that, I know this, I've seen people in kayaks and small boats out there as well. I mean, they're not supposed to be there, but they're there.
How long do you, are you gonna, you gonna keep a seat on the board up until, like, the final house built, the final top coat? Where do you see them taking over completely?
Basically, I intend to always own a lot in there, and I do intend to be on the board. As you know, I live...
Oh, you could be ousted.
Maybe, well, not if I write the documents correctly.
Exactly.
And I do live nearby, I live right up there, I have access directly to this property. And that cul-de-sac at the end there is gonna be, my wife and I just got married, we have five kids... have five kids amongst us. So there's going to be five of our kids that are going to start off in there. What's that?
Brady Bunch.
Yeah, pretty much the Brady Bunch. So I plan to keep it a lot, and I, and I know the kids. And this is supposed, this is for, you know, this is for a family that wants to live in Wayham, and with these prices, that, the way they're going. You know, we, we've lived in Wayham. My kids went to school in Wayham. Her schools went, you know, went to Wayham schools. So we're going to, my, there's going to be five lots set aside for each one of the kid, the children. So, and we've, we've debating on, like White Island, basically, you can buy in to the association. So some of the areas, people that have used this property in the past, I'm trying to find a way to incorporate some to be able to buy in, in the annual fee, the same as a homeowner, to be able to use the open space, because, you know, they use it now. So we're trying to figure out how to word that, and how to let people that don't actively live inside there to still allow them to use the open space. People, I've been talking to people across the street, over on County Road, that walk back there and things like that. So they'll share in on the taxes, and they'll share in on the, they'll share in the taxes, and they'll, they'll share in the use of, of that.
Any ancient ways in that area, John?
Excuse me?
Any ancient ways?
We believe, yeah, and that's what, we align the roadway, as you say, out to, there's a road that goes through Pennington's property, and goes down along the same alignment of Zara Road, out over to Squirrel Island. What we, what we know is that the end of Squirrel Island Road, when Whitehead bought the property, the Hajus gave Whitehead permission to go down through Squirrel Island Road to get here. There's been individuals placing gates now and stuff. I spoke to Mr. Pennington, and he put a gate as well on his property. So without getting involved with too much of the rights and going, and going back and forth, we're coming off of County Road. We're going to end the end of it. Anytime it crosses any type of old road, we're going to make sure we cut the curb and, and people can still.
How about Mackey's Way? Do you have any rights on that road at all?
We couldn't find anything from Mackey Way. Basically, the Whiteheads, when the Whiteheads bought this, the only thing we saw was they granted, because Haju was the one that conveyed it, they granted the rights to Squirrel Island Road, is what they, what they granted. So as you remember, La Russa did a lot of back and forth with De Felice and I believe it was the Walcotts, with exchanging in order to bring the road off of County Road. That's the plan that you see here before you practically, except for La Russa had the 56, you know, they had their lots. And they came in and then went out onto County Road on the further south area.
They went on through Simmons' property, right?
Excuse me?
Through Simmons' property.
Yep, through there. And it was just.
Which was Haju.
It was a lot of, exactly. Yep. And there was a lot, you know, that, that, that plan, the first thing I said, when I looked at that plan, I said, that's just, it's not going to work, you know? It's granted each property, you know, no open space, acre and a half, two acre lots, a lot of roadway. And that's why when I, when we looked at this, I said, this is, this is craving open space, craving using those, those trails for what they need to be used for. And there's obviously some stuff that needs to be tightened up in those homeowners documents to, to make sure, you know, they can allow people to use dirt bikes, or they, or they not, you know? So those are things that, like, as Sam was saying, basically, you know, that you probably don't want them to use. If you're paying insurance, you don't, you probably don't want motorized vehicles on the property, you know? I'd like to see a nine-hole golf course, personally, right? But who's going to construct that, right? But it's beautiful back there. I walk it, you know, a couple, a couple times a week, you know? We walk it through there, so. And we see other people utilize that as well. So we can see walking and fishing, whatever you, whatever you can do in this open space is nice. And I think it's a great, I think it's a great project for this property, compared to what else it could be, you know? So we meet all the requirements, meet all the regs. That's all we can do, is, is put there, put forth what's, what's, what the zoning allows you to do on, on that property.
No concerns about commuter, commuter hour traffic out on the county?
Oh, no. There's, yeah, county, county road's pretty busy enough, but.
Well, that's what, that's why I was thinking.
Yeah, it's busy enough.
Fifty-six houses in there. I got to imagine 40 of them are probably going to still be workaday people, you know, going to have a huge retirement population.
Yep. What's beautiful, what's nice about this is you're halfway between, you know, exit two, 1495, and you're, you know, you can get on to 195 as well, with the same distance.
Well, that's why that road's so busy now, because if you're in Mary, you're going to Boston. You don't take County Road. You save nine miles. And that road's pretty busy in the morning. In the evening.
Yep.
I would posit that it probably always was busier than, than other streets, simply by, by the fact that it's called County Road.
Any other questions? Jane, you trying to squeeze a question out?
Trying. Not coming up with it.
Sam?
Carl? Just the last comment to the applicant. Mr. Bertolo noted that we passed updated subdivision rules and regs. We also passed updated site plan review rules and regs. So I am going to go back, and I understand you filed before that, but I am going to go back and look at the list of requirements and tear it to the application. And I may have questions about that. So if you get a chance, go through the, the updated rules and regs, and see if there's anything that, in the application, you missed. So, for example, one of the new requirements is a title searched 50 years back, and I don't believe that was included in, although you spoke to that, it was not included in the application. You were referring to it, which, which brought it to my mind. So I, I request that you at least go back and look at the list of revised requirements in the rules and regs for site plan review, as well as subdivision. Because this, I think, is both, right?
Site plan review and special permit for cluster.
Yes. So.
And subdivision.
So those rules and regs conceivably apply. So we could discuss anything that might be missing in the, in those new requirements.
There has been a title examination done on the property. So I don't know if the board, do you want the attorney's title examination to be submitted to the?
In the new, in new applications, it will be submitted. So if you have it, and you could submit it, that would be great.
Yeah, it'd be good to have it as part of the record.
Because we've run into a couple of cases where title was, ended up being a little confusing after we got into the project. So we're trying to head that off. So my request is just go through the list and see if there's anything. And I know it came after you submitted, so I understand that.
Okay. So at this point, where you received a comment from Phil today?
Today, I mean, we.
Yeah, it's what we call the 11th hour, Hail Mary. I'd like to go through the peer review, obviously. You said that there was some comments that Phil made that you want to respond to. I'd like Phil to, which we've already discussed, Phil and Josh, to both go through the 21E report, and, and just make sure there's no concerns there. Who, who exactly are you having the affordable housing conversation with? On what level is that taking place?
That's internally. I mean.
It's internal.
Yeah. I mean, it's, well, because we went round and round with how do you do it?
Right.
What came up to us was you would have to donate, basically, or gift the, the lot away to Habitat for Humanity, is where.
How, how would?
No, you could, you could make five of the units affordable in the, in the project.
Yeah, I mean, nothing has to be given away.
Are you willing to allow a higher density to fit those in?
I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm just saying that that is a way of doing it. So explore, come back with options.
Yeah. I mean, at 56 houses, that's putting us behind the eight ball by almost six houses. So it does create even more stress on the town when it comes to the number we have to meet. So, I mean, you got a nice big pond there. Did you ever think of houseboat?
Anyway, I've asked you to consider it. We haven't, we haven't addressed inclusionary housing in the, in the bylaw yet, but we are doing a bylaw review. So, anything we can do. Because we've got to, as I said, it's the law, but it's also, we've got to, we've got to deal with it in terms of being citizens of the world, so.
Well, just for this board's knowledge, I'm representing another developer on a different project for a senior affordable apartment complex. And between that, Littleton, when that comes online, and Woodland Cove, we should be either right on, or even maybe a little bit over the 10%. That was the last guidance that I got from Ken Buckland before his unfortunate retirement.
That's, that's good when, when you get us on, on track. But every time you develop more houses, the number, the, the total that we're working against goes up.
And that's where you people come in to draft an inclusionary bylaw.
That's what, that's why I'm actually, and we are looking at, and as you know, Mr. Tuttlebaum, I am actively involved in affordable housing. And we're working with Josh. The, the guidance from the planning office on the SHI is still a little uncertain. And the, the last update I got was we're only at 7%.
Yeah. As the last report I got from Ken, even with all of those projects coming online, we were, we were still behind the eight ball.
And, and it's not clear that all the Littleton units have been listed in the inventory yet. I'm still trying to get that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I said Littleton, I meant Woodland Cove.
Well, you don't see them in the inventory until there's a certificate of occupancy. That's, so until, you know, until that happens, you can have a beautiful shining building that anybody can walk in and take a bath and cook a meal on the stove. And until they've got that piece of paper, it's, it's not on the SHI.
Right. That's, so that's, it's hard to.
That's the state's way of forcing people to complete projects and get them permitted and occupied, correctly.
Anyway, we're, we're talking way off track. I appreciate that you're considering it. Please keep us informed. Please let us know if you can, if there's anything we can do to assist. And we are looking at the zoning bylaws continually, and an inclusionary article would be a way to help with that going forward.
Okay. So, knowing.
But I can just add, in, it would be interesting, in that regard, if we could have a conversation in some form, maybe not before this board, but in some form. Since we have a project to look at the zoning bylaws, if you could give us an idea of lessons learned, or things that, that would have resulted in a better project if the bylaws had been a bit different. I think that would be something that would be helpful to us.
That would be an opportunity to bring back your, your setback question.
Setbacks, yeah.
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few things. And we see them, because we're, we're looking at these regulations, you know?
Mostly?
A lot. And I, I can tell you that we did look at the, some of those illustrations. We can get into that, or we can talk to whoever's going to be now in.
Even the, the planning board regulations that were voted, I found some inconsistencies between details and verbiage.
So that would also be welcome, because rules and regs, as you know, are, are open to improvement, at a much easier process than changing bylaws.
The bylaws are open to, to revision, too, but it's much more cumbersome.
As I said, it's easier, it's easier to address mistakes in the, in the.
I think that the cluster development regulations are, have not been exercised a whole lot.
No, they haven't.
So I think that your insights from having exercised it would be very useful.
So we're the guinea pigs.
Kind of.
Yeah.
We've done a couple. We've done a couple. And we need to make sure, as a board, in our findings, we walk through those rules and regs and our findings.
You should go back to those proponents and ask them for their comments, too.
It may not be comments we want to hear.
That's probably good. Good to know those.
Okay. All right. So we've got a couple of, a couple of chores to do. Josh, do you feel that you and Phil, of course, I can't speak for Phil, and you can't either, but I'm going to ask you anyway, is, is two weeks sufficient time? Is, is two weeks what you're looking for?
This is still a public hearing, so.
I understand.
Oh, okay. I didn't want you to, I didn't want you to.
Yeah. No, I get it.
Forget.
I think that the narrative portion of the report is less than 40 pages. The rest of it is all, you know, sampling detail and all that sort of thing. I don't know how deep, you know, Josh would necessarily want to get into that. I would suspect Phil might want to get in a little deeper, but, but I'm not sure. So it's not as though they have to digest all 400 pages, you know, chapter and verse.
No, as long as they can both come back to us.
Right.
With some confidence that says, yeah, everything looks like it should, and there's nothing for the board to concern themselves with. Whether they read four pages or 400 pages, it's going to be their professional opinion that we're going to rely on. Okay. Okay. I guess at this point, if there's anybody that would like to comment from the public, since this is a public hearing. Sure. Come on up. You're going to have to make space.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. First thing I want to say is, I'm not against.
If, if you could identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My name is Mike Gay dou, and I'm the resident at 500 County Road. G-A-Y-D-O-U. And again, I'm not against this project. I'm really not. I told that gentleman the first night that we were here. But I am against being maybe a little impacted more than the rest of the folks. I'm going from one street that passes by my house, County Road, and now I'm going to have a road to the north and to the east. My property is going to be surrounded by blacktop. And I understand, that's the cost of progress, and we need more housing. I get all of that. But I guess I want to know about what I can expect for drainage off of these roads, and how it might impact otherwise dry basement that I have now. I also read in one of the reports, I'm not sure if it was Lightship, or was it your report, but one of them talked about mounds throughout the property. And I was kind of wondering, did anybody excavate any of these mounds to find out what was in them?
Twenty of the mounds, I believe, were excavated. And, and that's, you can find that information online as well, in that report. That's the.
Some of the mounds, but there were 20 excavated pits. But some of the mounds were just leftover stockpile. They were, they were looking for fine sand. So, you know, coarse sand, or loam, or topsoil just wasn't necessary to be pulled out of there. So that's, that's the reason for some of the stockpiles.
Okay. Well, the mound that's in back of Seven Hills, which was your original proposal for Lot One, there's a mound there, and it's full of rusted metal. There's a car frame, there's a transmission. There are various other automobile pots back there that had been thrown back there. Some of the metal looks quite old. I guess my concern is, if that was put there, what else might be there? And if any of that other stuff was in any of the other mounds? Because the last thing I want is more contamination around my house. My wife and I built this house 15 years ago. This was our last house. This is the one we're going to pass on. And it's just been a, it's been a big impact, and it's got my wife and I wondering if we should move or not. So I was wondering if any of that could be discussed about the mounds or anything like that. Or if somebody would like to walk out and see the one behind Seven Hills.
Well, we do know that there's been a fair amount of dumping on the property over the years, whether this is a consequence of dumping, or whether this is a consequence of, gee, you know, the old screen that we used to get, you know, such and such type of sand is starting to rust apart, we're just going to bust it up and put it over there, which is quite likely. There's nothing, there's nothing illegal about dumping rusted steel on a property. That's not considered hazardous material. So, so if you're seeing those kinds of things, I would, I would suggest they probably wouldn't have left transmissions around, but I can't say for sure either. Who knows what people were doing back there in the 50s, as far as that sort of thing?
Absolutely. I totally agree with you.
So there will be, I mean, we have talked about getting dumpsters in there, cleaning up the things. I don't know if you've walked down the road and seen the, the boat, the boat that's there. Somebody actually dumped a boat.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, the SS Minnow actually wound up there, but not regularly.
You should go check it out. We can make you a good deal.
Again, I'm not against this housing, but I'm against, I want to make sure that it's done properly. And I'm trying not to beat myself to death over this thing. I've got 1.4 acres there, and I always liked the fact that I could go out in the back, and I was in the woods. Now I'm going to go out in the back, and I'm going to see a street. And I'm going to walk to the north of my property, and now I'm going to have another street. And I look to the front of my property, and I've got County Road. And to that gentleman's point, you're right, that's a very busy road. And now we're going to have Whispering Pines, we're going to have this new road going in, and then my driveway. And across the street, we've got two houses that went in over there. It's, just looks to me like we're going to have a major intersection right there on County Road. And to the 56 houses, I don't know anybody who doesn't have two cars now. There's going to be at least 112 vehicles in and out of there. There's gonna be at least 112 vehicles in and out of there. So, I'm, I'm just trying to minimize that impact, if we can work on, something on that. I know there's nothing you can do about that road going in on the north side, you've gotta access your property. I, I get that, and we'll work around that, but I hope you guys will work with me on kinda, kinda covering it up a bit.
Well, I know earlier you had, through you, you had expressed a concern about the type of lighting out there.
Yeah.
And, you know, this, I mean, I have to assume.
I hadn't seen this.
No, no, we had talked, I think Brad and I had talked about whether they could be motion lights, things of that nature, dark skies compliant, that kind of thing.
It has to be dark sky compliant.
Yeah, it does. So, to that point, you know, I, I don't think that, you know, I mean, look, if somebody comes home at, you know, 3:00 AM after partying all night, the light's gonna go on, you know, there's no avoiding that. But, you know, we're hoping there's certainly, in terms of what you see in the night sky, there will be a little impact for you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to the citizens' question, did we get a traffic study?
No, that's why I brought up the question about traffic in and out of.
Yeah, I got it. So, did you guys, you guys didn't do a traffic study, right?
We didn't, and County Road's a county road, and it's heavily traveled, so, I mean, I know 110 does sound a lot, but if you go all.
I just, you did, there is, there is no traffic study.
And what we could do, and what we will do is do some type of screening for you, and definitely some ID's that will get some height.
Is there a requirement for a traffic study?
And I've got, I've got property exactly to the north, it's where the property tapers in and goes by the back edge of my property, and then across the whole rear end of it, where it kind of goes by there.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the planning office, do, do the bylaws require a traffic study for cluster development? Can we, we'll look into that.
I can't speak to it now, but I'll look into it.
I, I will too. Do you?
It's, it's just an impact statement as part of the site plan review procedures.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of things in the impact statement.
Yeah, we addressed, yeah, there was like five or six different categories, and that was part of our site plan review application, so it was all addressed.
I'll go back and, I'll go back and re-review those.
Yeah, make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
Thank you.
What are we discussing, gentlemen?
Yep, no, this is a public hea, you can't, you can't.
That's okay.
You have to ask the question through him, and then back, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all done then, that's fine. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Missing any?
Can you put it to your back?
Why don't you leave the chair here?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're playing use of chairs. Whoops, sorry.
Kathy Papalardo, Fairing Hill Road, I have two questions. In the huge, long report from the engineering and the environmental report, there was a question on, what is an orphan, I forgot what it was called, on page 89, an orphan, hang on. Orphan summary, and then it lists three addresses. I didn't know what an orphan summary was, I was hoping perhaps one of the gentlemen with the project could explain it.
What was the, your, your questioning?
What, what is an orphan summary? I didn't know what that meant.
It's the first time I've heard it too, so, it's a good question.
Mr. Titlebaum, have you snuck that in yet?
So, this is, this looks like, honestly, this looks like DEP information showing releases of contamination at other properties in the general vicinity.
So, as part of the 21 E assessment, they did half mile and one mile and.
Okay.
Radiases to determine if there are already any active.
Because they did list WIPCO as one.
That was, that's correct, and if I could, that's the one that, if you go on the DEP site, and do the searchable thing, and you can pull up the town aware ham, and there's hundreds of sites in the town, believe it or not, listed on there, where at one point or another, there were notices of responsibility issued, and people had to hire a licensed site professional, as I was talking about earlier, and go through the whole cleanup This subject property did have petroleum release from, from tanks that were there. They were in the DEP system, they excavated, you know, a whole bunch of oil contaminated sand that they got out of there, they reported what they did to DEP, they submitted, you know, the release abatement plan, and then they submitted the response action outcome, which is basically saying, we've closed out the site, we started with this, we did that, we shipped it over there, and now the site is clean.
So, cradle to grave.
Cradle to grave, this is all on the DEP website, and that means the site is officially closed out as far as DEP is concerned, that nothing improper was done, that it appears from DEP's perspective that the right things were done to alleviate the contamination that was there, and that the public could go ahead, you know, and have confidence that it was taken care of, is sort of founded in the fact that there's no activity and use limitation out there. And an activity and use limitation is when you can't get all the contaminating, and you've got a hot topic, or you don't want to put a school there, or you don't want kids there, or you don't want to, you know, get air up out of the ground.
Love Canal.
Yeah.
Let's look at Caredo.
Well, you know, if I could diverge one second, Mike, I gave you the lecture, I gave you the one-minute lecture about Love Canal.
Well, yeah, but I, I don't want to head down that road. She, she asked a question about an orphan summary, I think you answered it, we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The one other concern that I had is that report was very interesting with chronological pictures and maps and everything, and it's amazing, all of the old, old ones, there's nothing about that pond. We, I know we're calling it a pond, but it really should just be called something other than a pond, because it's not natural. When all of those, you go back to all of those, that pond doesn't show up until after 1949. There's nothing there. You can see streams, and they acknowledge the name of them, there's no pond there. And then when you get into the 50s, there's the pond, they must have started the sand mining, they hit groundwater, and then the ponds are getting bigger and bigger. How, back at the housing development that Mr. Baptiste was referring to, that was a huge concern, was the instability around that pond, being a huge red flag. And the pond, I guess it was through the mining, you can see at those aerial photographs how the pond went, because the aerial photographs started in the 50s, you see the pond, and then it's getting bigger and bigger, I guess as they're mining with it, but all the old pictures, or topo maps, they're not photographs, there's no pond at all, there's nothing. So, it, I think that pond is still a huge concern, whether it's, you know, private for all of the people who are living there, or anybody who's trespassing, which I realize you're trespassing, it's your problem, I guess, but that pond, I have grave concerns over that pond because of those past hearings.
Is that pond greater than 10 acres, John?
Excuse me?
How big is that pond?
Thirty and a half.
Okay, so, it's under jurisdiction of the states, considered a great pond, well, it's not a pond, it's me and me.
It was like a five-year limitation that expired after work taking place, so now it's considered a resource area in the eyes of Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie, Annie Hayes, Farmer's Lane, good evening. I may have missed a meeting where you discussed the density of the 56 proposed lots. Are there all, are they all uniform-sized lots, or do you, oh, let me just put it this way, oops, from Mike to you.
What's the question?
The question is, what, what is the density? If there are four people per house, it would be 224 people. So, if there are different sizes of houses that are predicted, or different sized lots that then inhibit a larger four-person house, I want to know what is the maximum number of people that you might, that they might anticipate?
I don't know if you could actually quantify by people. I mean, it's, you could have one house where just a retired couple live, and you can have one house where they've got five kids, like, like the proponent. You, you have no idea how many people are gonna end up in that community?
Well, we were talking about, I'm talking about a range, so there could be sing, one person, 56 people, or there could be 224, I don't think there would be more than four people if these lots are small. So, that's one thing that I would like to know, and that does affect the number of cars, most likely, and the number of children. And I don't think we ever got down to what Mike Baptiste was talking about, that this is, this was a quarry, and that the edges of this pond quarry are very steep, and are very hazardous for any child to be near. So, I can understand people fishing who are adults, people kayaking, maybe, you know, adults at their own risk, but if you have children, and the expectation is that this is a swimming hole, I think, Mr. Baptiste, you really painted a different picture.
Yeah, I looked in that area all my life, excuse me, Chair, for interrupting, and that mine, when they mined that, they had a suction going down, they had floats going out, and they sucked it from the bottom, that's why it goes straight down, that's why it's so deep. You know, it wasn't excavated as conventionally with machinery dragging it out, it was done by suction, vacuum type stuff.
And so, in your estimation, what is holding the, the sides, the walls of this man-made water body?
Well, sand, and if you dig a hole, a swamp or whatever.
It just.
It's gonna shear down, it's gonna seek its own level, because the cliffs are gonna come down.
Right, so there's some, some slope, but you get out.
But the slope is very unstable.
A certain distance, and there is no bottom, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's, and to have a, a homeowner's association, I mean, I don't think you would put that in your brochure, would you? That this is a treacherous swimming hole?
I would disagree with that characterization.
I was gonna say, I, I think you might be taking, I think you're taking liberties with the description, Anne. You know, if it's on the property, and it's part of the homeowners' association, it could be just a visual pond that you like to look at, it could, you know, if you decide to go in, you're doing it your own peril. It's, it's the homeowners' association and their insurance policies issue at that point. I mean, I lived on a pond, I had, I had a child when we lived on the pond, does Tahaan Pond any more treacherous than this hole?
Sounds like this is, this is far more treacherous.
Well, yeah, but you, you're basing that on assumption, we don't have any detail, and I'm not, I don't think I, I want to get into that kind of discussion.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I needed to bring that up. I also am wondering about if you have 56 lots, and that the 56 lots are going to be on 36, 7 acres, if I do the subtraction, and then the, from the 37 acres, there will be roads, is it reasonable through you, Mr. Chair, to consider that they're approximately half-acre lots?
No, I think they're even smaller, they're quarter acre.
13,000 square feet, for the most part.
Yeah, so, a little over quarter acre.
Quarter acre.
Plus or minus.
So, there really isn't that much safe area for children to play, if we're talking about all these cars, and there's, so I thought that was a good point, Jane, and I'm wondering why, instead of going to the ZBA to allow a variance, why wouldn't you reduce the number of lots, so that the lots would be bigger, and would be more, provide more.
This is a cluster, cluster development, and if we go back to the original hearing, we addressed the cluster development density issue, or as, check, well, it's referenced in paragraph 813 is where it starts. This is all covered under Article 8, Annie.
Okay.
For the cluster development. The subdivision, or, excuse me, subdivision, the roads, that's covered separately. So, we're looking at a combination of things here, the roadway, and then the cluster development. So, the density questions were addressed extensively at the opening meeting, so.
That's what I missed, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, and actually, I don't know that we actually have the minutes from that, but the recording, so, we had a great deal of discussion about the density, and there was a, a document submitted, but, so.
So, there are density requirements that are met, that's a, that's a main point.
We went through, we went through that, and, and I can't speak to, because I don't remember the exact facts, but I do remember that it, at the opening hearing, we went around and around on that with the applicant, and it was resolved at that time, but I don't remember exactly how. You did, you did submit a, a document, right?
Yeah, it's a conventional plan that shows you how we came up with.
The count.
Total by right lots, and that was what's designed under cluster, which are actually not the smallest that you could provide, 10,000 square feet is the smallest lot, and small lots allow for more open space, so.
So, and I will also refer you to Article 818, which talks about the, the density questions, lot sizes, number of lots. So, good questions, we asked all those about this project, and it's, it's in the record, but I don't remember all, I'm trying to help you, because I remember.
No, I, I'll talk to you later, or we'll get a reference.
We, we asked all the questions that you're asking.
Because we're talking about livability, and if there are children, I mean, you know, people who are buying the lots have to make these decisions too, but.
Of course.
As people who are talking about the quality of living in the town.
I think, this is my own opinion, you're basing, I, I believe you're basing your assumption on the fact that you live on a large parcel of land, and you have lots of room. I've lived in a cluster development. When I lived over on Tahaan Pond, they were quarter acre lots with 700, 800,000 dollar homes. It's a very livable environment. A quarter acre lot does not define living like a chicken in a coop.
No, I've lived on a quarter acre, I mean, between a quarter and a half acre lot, I know what that's like.
Right, so, I, I don't think the size of the lot defines.
Also on a road, and I know what that's like, so, that's, I want, I'd like to show you, this is the FEMA 2021 flood map, and this property, if I have it right, looks to be in an AE zone, elevation 14 feet, and with the quarry on one side, and then surrounded by flood zone, that, you know, and I can't tell you degree of flood, but it's a 2021 FEMA map. Do you want to take a look?
Sure.
Because I don't think that that has been addressed, maybe.
Tech, the town consultant stated that a portion of this property is in the floodplain overlay district. We updated our maps, it's the far south-eastern portion of the property within the open space. There is, you know, AE flood zone 14, she is correct on that, but far southeast, no, no.
Not, not where the houses are.
Not where the houses are going.
Well, the elevations where the houses are in the 30s and 40s, and the, actually, the elevation of the pond is at 17, so, those FEMA numbers are based not on the pond, but on tidal, tidal sea level.
I'm not sure what you're saying. There, it's, the elevations of different areas, but the, the property then that's being developed is the upland, right? And is, and is it forested? I don't, I don't know that yet.
Oh, yes.
Yes, so, just in the, the projects that we've discussed today, that's 158 of forested upland that is going to be lost. So, I, I hope everyone is keeping on in mind the cumulative effect of project after project after project, because that's only three, and there are a whole bunch queued up.
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to consider that.
Well, that is unfortunate, and living in a, a town that's so vulnerable to the loss of upland, you know, what's left of us, I think Mr. Barrett once said, we're just a collection of islands, that was what he said once, and sea level is, is on the, on the move.
Thank you, Anne.
Anyway, I refer you to Article, a lot of your questions, Annie, are answered.
It's not where the site is, the site's here. Oh, okay. It's on the north side.
Article 8 and the original meeting in January both have some information towards you. Article Eight and the original meeting in January both have some information towards your questions. I think, not January, it's the December, actually, was the December meeting, I think? It was one of the earlier meetings, I can't remember which one. I don't think, I don't know if it was the January meeting or the December meeting.
Yeah, we had a meeting on December eleventh and January eighth.
Right. I think it was more the first meeting where we talked about the density.
We discussed October sixteenth and November, November thirteenth.
Yeah, we have, we've had a lot of meetings on this project.
There were four meetings before this.
I remember being on the early ones, when we discussed the quarry.
And if you can't find it, let me know, and I'll see if I can find, but we did talk about the density issue most specifically.
Actually, Annie, if you look at the agenda, it's got the, the matrix at the bottom, and if you go to the project, it tells you what meetings we talked about this project on.
Andy, Andy, could you send us by email a copy of what you just showed us?
Yeah, for, for the minute taker, we, we are looking at a FEMA National Flood Hazard Layer Viewer, uh, document submitted by Ms. Hayes, that needs to be, we have to list all the documents.
And I will point out that there's a, a marked circle around...
There's a couple of circles, yeah.
Well, there's one in Ballpoint Pen.
There's two, but...
Okay, well, the site is actually north of that pond, not south of it.
Right. And I don't, I guess this is the pond, right?
Nope.
That.
This is the site right here, there's County Road.
So, that's the pond.
That's the pond, right, the site is not here where the cluster is, the cluster is up here.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Trish?
I can't miss out. Tricia Wirths, Thirty-Tenth Street, Wareham. Um, I just have a, um, a very short comment. I do, um, encourage the board to require a, an impact study regarding the traffic. I go up County Road all the time coming out of my house, so I don't have to deal with the traffic around all the shopping areas. It's gotten heavier and heavier, but in addition to this development, you have the development that's on the corner of County Road and Twenty-Eight, which technically sits in Rochester, but I don't remember. It seems to me there is somewhere between a hundred and two hundred units being built up there right now to live in. And so, when we start to look at traffic congestion in that area, it's going to be horrendous. And this is, will be part of it, but it won't be all of it. And I think for the citizens, the town has to look at that congestion issue, um, across the board. You'll never get out of those roads, that's it.
Thank you. There, we do have one online, okay?
Hello, can you hear me? Jim Menes here.
Mr. Menes?
Yeah, Cranberry Highway, um. Did I hear correctly that it's nine hundred feet in from County Road to the first part of the development, or...
Yeah, it's about that, yeah.
And how many, um, entrances and exits are there coming in off of County Road? To the development, one or two?
Just the one.
Okay, um, and, um, the, the, um, regular development, if I remember correctly, would, would require about twelve thousand feet of roadway? And the cluster is down to under six thousand?
Uh, yeah, it's just a little over six, it's about fifty percent less, less pavement, less roadway.
Which is good, and that's a considerable savings on the cost of developing, I would think. Um, and, and this is a special pro, special permit, correct?
It is.
Which can be conditioned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would, I would invite Mr. Churchill to, um, come to the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, and we might be able to have some discussion and do some clarification on, uh, process and what's allowed and not allowed, um, in, in fitting, um, affordable homes within that development, which would probably be, would be great for the town, because, you know, we're looking to the future, not present, in the future, and everything counts. And, um, I think it would do, it would be good, it'd be a lot of clarification on both sides. So, I would invite him to do that. I don't know if we sent our agenda out yet, but if not, I would get in touch with the Chair and possibly set something up. And it's just informal, you know, so we can have some conversation, formally but informally. Um, at this point, that's all, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, I would like a redirect when you're done with the public comment.
Okay, is there anybody else online? Okay, who do we have wishing to comment?
Oh, yeah, Eric Lintel of Fifteen Squirrel Island Road. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Um, knowing that there's a, a lot of concern with the traffic coming in and out of this development, uh, and looking at the map on Road A, the cul-de-sac at the end, lots fifty-six, fifty-five, fifty-four, I guess my question, is there any intention, anything in the fine print or anywhere, that there will be a connection onto Squirrel Island Road at this point?
The cul-de-sac at the end, actually... The cul-de-sac, as we, as we discussed, there's a, there's a dirt road, basically, at the end of Squirrel Island Road. There's a dirt path that goes, so we will put a curb cut there, maybe a gate. Um, so, our thoughts are, in keeping in planning purposes, that Squirrel Island Road is a one-way road as well. Um, it allows for residents of Squirrel Island Road to exit through our subdivision, out to County Road, uh, if they need to. It's not gonna be used on a daily basis, only in emergency use only. Uh, I can report, you know, back to when Kermit said, or Swiss Beach, when they had that, uh, that gas leak, and they had to open up a, 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 a path over through Kermit, I believe. Uh, so, very similar to that style. Um, when we designed this, we made sure that the ability for residents of Squirrel Island Road could, could get out. Um, we're not worried about our traversing the site, but more or less for, for residents of Squirrel Island Road, another, you know, in addition to the electric service, the, the connection there.
So, there's no anticipated traffic leaving the development going out?
No, definitely not, no, there wouldn't be any, you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna leave a nice paved road to drive down Squirrel Island Road. No.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd put a gate up, and I, you know, and obviously, if you, it wouldn't be, uh, regular traffic. It'd only be for emergency purposes.
So, it'd be like a fire access gate, that type of thing?
Yeah, for instance, I mean, on Squirrel Island Road, the, uh, the, the water department bedded, um, a portion of those lots as well, but they cannot put the water line down Squirrel Island Road, because it's a one-way road. So, they can't, uh, efficiently actually put and, and do a water line, uh, along Squirrel Island Road. So, there was residents, that even though they paid a bedment, they don't actually have a water line. Uh, so, I'd, I'd been in conversation with Andy Cunningham to allow the residents to potentially use our road, if we get further along, uh, if they ever wanted to, uh, exploit that opportunity again to put the water line down Squirrel Island, if they ever wanted to do that. We would give them the rights to, the residents, the rights to do that. They, they approached, I believe, Eagle Hole, um, and were told no, that they, the, the, the residents could not use uh, the access through the bogs to Blackmore Pond. Uh, so, um, that's what I've been told. But, again, we designed this, so it, it gives flexibility and design considerations for that.
Just to clarify to the citizens' comments, that there's no...
Correct, yeah.
There's no planned, uh, traffic running out of the, the development up Squirrel Island Road?
Correct, we, we would put a gate there, even though, uh, two individuals have already put two gates there now.
Right, now you can have, you can have young...
We would put a, we would put a third gate there.
Thank you. Is there anything else, sir?
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
If I might, just sort of make a brief remark about traffic generally. I live on Oak Street, which comes out at the intersection of Minnetonka and Narrows Road. And once upon a time, there was a smaller school about a mile down Minnetonka Ave. And now we have the, what is really two schools combined into one, because they took the kids from Deacon's, took the kids from Minnetonka, and put them all at Minnetonka with the new school. And I can tell you that if I try to leave my house, when the school traffic is going, the buses are going by, the parents are bringing the kids to school, there might be three cars at the end of my road at the stop sign, waiting to either go down to the right on Minnetonka Ave, or go to the left to go up to Wareham Village on Narrows Road. So, and, and there are a lot of residents who use my road in the morning. We've got half of Parkwood, we've got half of, uh, all the houses down that way. So, again, I'm speaking anecdotally, but I think County Road is certainly capable of handling, uh, you know, another couple hundred vehicle trips a day.
Well, we, we will definitely look into that, and look into whether or not there is a traffic study that's warranted. Okay, is there anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none and hearing none, Mr. Schultz?
Oh, thank you, uh, earlier, we had discussed, um, I went back to look at the bylaws. We discussed the homeowners' association. Um, I'd like to refer the applicant to eight eighteen point two, the management section. You're, you're required to submit a plan, and, um, a description and a plan, which means, a plan to me means written, a plan for how the, uh, common open space will be maintained in perpetuity. I don't, was that in the application? I don't remember seeing it. Uh, uh, we don't have to answer it now, I'm referring it to you. And, um, there, uh, I think to some, I don't remember if it was Ms. Corricker, there is a requirement that a plan and an agreement that is approved by town council for how this property will be maintained in perpetuity must be submitted. Um, that's, uh, eight eighteen two point two. So, there's a couple of, um, documents that I think we need to go back and make sure that we have them. You see where I'm looking, Brian?
Yeah, that's one if town, uh, perform maintenance in the, in the open space. We'll take a look at it, it's, it's gonna be maintained by the, by the home, the H O A.
It has to be doc, it's a condition of the approval, and it has to be in a form that the town council approves. Those were two items that we talked about earlier, a better addressed. Ms. Hayes's question brought this to my mind. So, just, we need to just tick all the boxes before we're done. I appreciate that, and I, and I know you've got a plan, we just have to, we just have to get it documented.
Yes, sir.
So, um, that was my last, I need to catch up. There's a lot of reading for the stuff that's coming at us.
Sam?
I just wanna go back a little bit and describe the pond. Back in the day, it was like talcum powder, very valuable. They mined it for a while, started filling it with water. Like Michael said, they had big vacuum pumps that went to the bottom. I swam there, I fished there, it got down so far, it would cave in. Dig a hole at the beach, and it's gonna cave in. It doesn't go straight down. I, I would go into an area, and it was deep, a couple weeks later, it wasn't so deep, because it would cave in. And I, I haven't walked around the whole thing and gone in the water, but there was three or four places where I walked in, and, and it didn't go straight down. It just kept caving in, and it almost stayed at the same level. They sucked out the sand that caved in, and they got a little deeper and caved in again. As Michael said, they had, uh, floats on top of the water, and they moved them around, and it would cave in. So, I don't believe that there's a serious damage that's gonna be done to the public by having somebody drown and being caved in on or whatever. It's a gorgeous pond, I wish the town had bought it. Good fishing.
Thank you. Mike, Sherri, Jane?
Oh, you're gonna protect the river, the river Otter in there, John? The Otter's in there.
Mike's gonna be watching you, so...
Because when that came before us last time, Charlie always sit there and says, "No way." And we had a biologist go down there, the Otter traverse from there, all the way down the Sipacan River, and into the ocean, but the river Otter in there. They were gonna put a bridge so they can go underneath, go further up.
Look, look at the wildlife study that we need for the...
Again, we're not doing any work down there, so...
Okay, um, having the public made comment, hearing what we needed to hear, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for fifteen dash twenty-three, Sarah John Realty. We can, we can put it on for the twenty-fifth. I will just give you a heads up that it's already packed with interesting projects.
It's heavy.
So, it's, it's your call if you wanna... It's, it's probably gonna be a late night, based on what's already on the agenda. But, I mean, it's your call, you can do that, or we can put you on the eighth.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to put us on, we can continue it, I mean, if we don't have the information, if there's anything else that needs to be done.
Just know that we're gonna wanna see your smiling face if you ask for continuance.
That's fine.
Okay.
As long as you handle it to begin, though, then.
Oh, I didn't say that.
Well, we understand, too, we can show up here and do it that way.
You can, yep, absolutely, yep. Okay, so I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for fifteen dash twenty-three, Sarah John Realty, until the next scheduled meeting of March twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri?
I don't think I can vote on this.
I'd like your opinion.
My opinion, I would vote in favor, if I could vote.
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. We'll see you on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
We've seen two river fires.
Okay, um, next up, continued public hearing, twenty-two dash twenty-three, N-Star Electric, D B A EverSource Energy, special permit, site plan review, thirty-seven Doty Street.
Good evening, everyone, good to see you all again. My name's, uh, Brian Potvin with Civil and Environmental Consultants, and, uh, joined by my colleagues here, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Ron Miller, C H K Architects.
Anthony Velo, EverSource Community Relations.
Anthony Velo, EverSource Community Relations.
Great, so we were first in front of you back in November. We gave the presentation about, uh, the reuse of the former flagship cinema site to be a EverSource training facility, uh, both inside and outside the facility. We, you had requested peer review comments. We came back in the end of February, uh, to ask for a continuance to this meeting. Since then, we've received a list of comments, uh, from the peer reviewer. Uh, we've responded to those comments and made some, uh, minor design adjustments in response to those comments, and submitted those back to the board, uh, last week. And so, prepared to run through a brief presentation again on the project, just to refamiliarize everyone, uh, and perhaps go through those comments and hear any, um, thoughts and concerns that you might have. Uh, we have, the, uh, Ron is the architect for the project, I'm the civil engineer, and we have a representative from EverSource on, uh, EverSource-related questions, so, um, does that sound, uh, okay?
No.
No, the one, the one thing, I mean, you can present if you'd like, and, and bring the project up to speed for the board to review, but the fact that we got your response to the peer review at the eleventh hour, as I like to call it, and none of us have absorbed it, because we got it today, we're, we're not even gonna entertain discussing it. We, we can't...
That's against our rules.
We can't... We can't have, we can't have information showing up the day of a meeting, I mean, and expect us to read it, absorb it, research it, and then discuss it. It's just, it's not reasonable. We've asked time and time again for proponents to make sure that anything they want us to discuss at a Monday night meeting be in the hands of the board members, no later than close of business Thursday. The planning office is closed on Friday, so emailing it to them on a Friday has no practical value. You might as well have sent it directly to us today. So, if you want to go through what you've got planned, that's great, we'd be more than happy to listen to it, but as far as discussing peer review comments and such, that's not going to happen tonight.
Okay.
You know, there's, it's unfortunate, but we've been requesting this accommodation for the board for, seems like, years, and there's a line drawn in the sand, and tonight is it.
Okay, I don't know what to say. We did, we were hoping to have peer review comments a lot, a lot earlier, too, to be able to kind of go through those at the last hearing, but I understand your point.
Yeah, it's just, it's impossible to discuss these things intelligently. But, when, I mean, I saw the email, I don't even know what time it came in today.
And mind you, we're volunteers.
Understood.
And we have kids and wives in the weekend, and...
And work.
We get things that are hundreds of pages, and we're supposed to read, understand, and come here and protect the town.
If we had provided the responses in time, we didn't make any substantive adjustments to the plan, so I'm not sure if it's the best use of the board's time to go through it again. We didn't make any real substantive adjustments to the plan, other than responding to the peer reviewers' comments. If we did submit the information with enough time for you all to review, what should we be prepared for, for the next time? Will we be going through each of these comments individually?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Chair, also to the applicant's point, it's really difficult for the board to review, a peer review, if the peer reviewer can't be at the meeting.
Right.
And it's difficult for the applicant.
Yeah, not that that's, you know, they can't control that, but I agree.
Yeah.
You know, if we want to ask Phil, you know, if you contest or find contrary to one of Phil's comments, and we want to ask him for rebuttal...
Yeah, so we should endeavor to make sure that that happens for the applicant and for us as well.
Yep. That's a good point.
I don't know, is there anything you want to, it is a public hearing, we have to, but is there anything you want to say, or...
I don't think so. I don't think there's anything material different of the proposal than what we presented last time, unless, is there any...
So, it all really just surrounds the peer review?
It really is. I mean, we did address all of the comments, and we don't have any real objection to those comments, and we adjusted the design, you know, to comply with those, and I think you'll find that when you do have an opportunity to look through.
Have you gotten ConCom's comments as well?
We submitted to the Conservation Commission, they've heard and issued an order of conditions for the project.
Oh, there is an order of conditions?
Is that on the, is that posted to the project?
That didn't get sent over to us yet.
I didn't know that it was a project.
It's a bylaw, absolutely says it has to come to us.
They won't come to you then.
Thank you.
And there was a...
Not for every project, but for projects that are for site review, site plan review.
And last time, we did talk about a building permit, so the project is keeping the existing building footprint, for all intents and purposes, other than a minor modification at a stairway to meet new code requirements. And since the last time we met, there was a building permit for the work inside the building.
That was going to be one of my, I can see there's activity going on over there.
They obtained a building permit to proceed with some interior renovations.
Right, I do remember that discussion, too, where they could continue and keep the project moving with that.
And you could see that there is some, not outside activity, but there's some activity going on.
Correct.
Okay, um, being a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to comment? Trish?
There's no more public. Kathy's still here.
Is there anybody online?
No one's right there.
You're not drawing the crowd that the previous project drew.
No, we are on County Road.
I would say, then, at this point, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing for 22-23 N-Star, 37 Doty Street. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pitch you guys the same thing I pitched the people before you. It's going to be a very, very tough meeting if we go to the 25th. There's all, it's already pretty busy, and the projects that are on it are a little bit on the contentious side, so it may drag out. So, I don't know what it's going to do to your schedule, but I would heavily suggest the 8th.
I think EverSource would like to proceed as soon as possible, so, if you...
EverSource would like to proceed with this matter as soon as possible, so, you know, if you could kindly put us on the...
I just, I don't know if we can get it on, to be honest. I know the first order of business on that project...
I understand that, you know, there's only certain many meetings you could get in per night, so...
Well, we have a time limit, and wouldn't it stink to sit here until we reach the time limit?
Correct, and we didn't get on, and...
That's my concern, is that there's two, there's two meetings already on my calendar that I know are going to be...
Long.
Hour and a half, two hours minimum each.
Okay.
So, where we start at 6:00, and we have to call it a night at 11:00, um, I don't really think that this would work out well. I really think we should push it till the 8th.
We get crankier the longer we're here, too.
That's true. That's true. You'd think Carl's cranky now, you should see him at 11 o'clock.
No, you are, you really are.
Unfortunately, I got a three-hour ride home to Connecticut.
Is there any interaction with the peer reviewer that we could have, or should we run that through the planning department in terms of making sure that he's available?
I think as far as availability, I don't think there's any harm with you emailing Phil directly and saying, "Hey, we're on for the 8th, could you make sure your schedule is going to allow it?"
Okay.
And, but as far as him doing any work on your behalf, as far as additional commenting or whatnot, obviously, that has to bill through the 53G through the office.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the discussion needs to be here in the public forum. Yep, I understand that, but we can help check his availability.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any concern with that at all.
Normally, we would ask Ken to do that. I don't know if you could talk to Phil about being available in the...
Yeah, we can reach out to him.
I mean, all scheduling comes through the planning office.
I'll speak to Phil. I normally handle the 53Gs with Phil.
Okay, so, blow us one of you. Normally, we ask Ken...
Ken's not there.
He looks like Ken. You don't look like Ken.
Well, there's no huge in Sonya.
Okay, Sonya, it's on you. Okay. Okay, so, we're in agreement on the 8th? Yep.
Yes. I move that we continue 22-23 N-Star Electric, CO doing businesses, EverSource Energy, the special permit, site plan review, 37 Doty Street, until the planning board meeting of April 8th.
Second.
We have a motion by Colin Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? I'm not even going to put you on the spot this time. I'm going to leave you off the hook. Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, we'll see you on the 8th.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
One last piece of business under other business. We're back to the 53G accounts. So, I had a conversation with the planning office. The planning office had a conversation with the town, what's her title?
She's the town accountant.
Accountant. And I have yet to get the email confirming it from her, because she's away on vacation this week, but verbally, we're being told that we are within our right to dispose of the old 53G accounts by her. So, my suggestion would be, A, we do nothing with it tonight, other than agree that if we do get written confirmation from the town accountant stating that we can clean up the 53G accounts, that we start with the small dollar accounts, under $500, and start the process of cleaning up that mess.
So, Mr. Chair, I understand that there are legal requirements for fiduciary responsibility for dealing with these accounts driven by the state.
That's why I approached the town accountant.
There's a whole process for dealing with delinquent funds, I understand, under state law. Or not delinquent funds, but abandoned, or...
At that point, that would be between the town accountant and the state.
Except, I don't want to have my name associated with a fiduciary act that, so we need real clear guidance.
Well, that's why I'm waiting for written confirmation that this process can take place.
Okay.
Once we have that, then we can confirm...
What about bonds?
No, this is strictly 53Gs.
Okay, so the bonds just...
We're gonna, well, if we're going to wade into these waters, let's stay in the kiddie pool first.
So, what happens to these funds if we were to vote?
They go back to the applicant.
If you, but I thought some of the cases, we don't even know who the applicant is, or can't find...
Oh, no, no, no. These, we're holding these funds because the projects now are complete, they're, the funds are going to go back to the applicant. We have a W-9 on file.
Okay, so as long as...
They're just old, inactive.
Okay, thank you. As long as there is someone to give the money back to, I was told that some of these go back way before, 10, 15 years, and nobody knows who the applicant is.
That's the case where I think the achievement process kicks in, where the state government eventually...
Okay, that was the word I had heard, yeah.
They'll advertise on TV, huh?
Yeah. Yep, that's, okay, so, Mr. Chair, as long as, when we're asked to release a fund for a 53G account, it's stated that we know who we're giving the money to?
We know where the funds are going.
Right.
Yep, okay. Well, I don't propose that we do anything...
Tonight.
Tonight, right. It was, I just wanted to get it out there, this is the path we're planning on taking, and hopefully, it's the right path, but at least we're getting some backup information by the town accountant.
Perfect.
Can we just get rid of the ones that say zero?
We don't, we don't have any that say zero. We have some that have 10 cents, we have quite a few under 500 and less than 500. And, I mean, right now, I probably have anywhere from, I don't know, 80 to 100 accounts that, you know, and getting rid of the ones that are 500 and less would help me a lot on a monthly basis, because I have to reconcile these accounts.
If there was an account balance of zero, there's no action needed by the board. You can just close it out.
I want an accounting of that money.
There is none.
Okay, good. So, we'll wait for the accountant to, town accountant to weigh in and give us that written information that we require to take the next step.
Anything else?
I'm waiting on you, Sam.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
I had a question. Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you.